Hi kids, how are ya?
Good.
My name is Mr. Andre, or you can call me Phil. What grade are you guys in?
Second.
Who's your teachers?
Mr. Ozawa.
I bet they're right here with ya, huh? I think I was in your classroom yesterday. I really enjoyed it. So, I've got, we've got a pin for you, an Auburn school pin. And I'm gonna give you each one, and I want you to look at the camera, and nice and loud, tell us who you are, and, well, I guess you've already told everyone, what grade. But do it nice and loud, so when you're watching on TV, you can be a movie star. Okay? What's your name?
Kelsey.
Thank you, Kelsey. Your name?
Elizabeth.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Your name?
Dominic.
Thank you, Dominic. And your name?
Matthew.
Thank you, Matthew. And yours?
Matthew.
Thank you. And yours?
Peyton.
Thank you. Yours?
Oh, did they?
Thank you, guys. You did a great job. We appreciate it. You guys wanna tell us a little bit about what you're doing in class currently?
Yes.
I know everybody would love to hear it.
Who wants to start? Who wants to start? Go ahead and raise your hand. Okay, ma'am. Go ahead, ma'am.
So, we do science, math, and read and explain. We do homework. We do homework at home. Okay, so, we do math, math.
Very nice, ma'am.
And we go to computer web and go spaces.
Very nice. Thank you.
And we write.
And you write. Very nice. Is there anyone else that would like to share? Maybe one more person? Okay, go ahead.
Um, we're doing three-digit numbers.
Multiplying, adding? Adding three-digit numbers. Very nice.
Yeah, we do that, too.
That's great.
And I've been in your classrooms, and I see that you all working cooperatively together. Very nice. Sometimes you're sharing with partners. Mr. Andre was with us just the other day, too, and he noticed how well you work together. You're writing, you're sharing, you're thinking critically. A lot of high-level questions, wondering why things happen, how they happen. That was wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, kids. Good job.
Well, we care all.
Here's Carol. Okay, yay.
Now where we started all.
Now we have everybody. Carol, thank you for being here. No, this is Carol Marshall.
Hi, buddy. We have a pin for ya. Thanks for coming.
Can we ask the teachers to introduce some songs as well?
Sure. I'm Karen Foose.
I'm Beth Gaston.
And I am Sarah Portofilo.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, I really, I gotta tell you, kids, I got, I have to admit something. I helped my, I was just submitting this onstage. I had to help my grandson, who was a third grader, a Seward elementary, with some math homework today. It's been a long time since I've done that kind of math, and I was amazed at how challenging it was. Because now everybody tends to do things on computer, and you tend to lose some of those skills. So, I commend you for working hard on, on all your subjects, because it's, it's hard. So, keep up the, keep up the good work. Work hard every day. You've got wonderful teachers. I saw that firsthand yesterday. So, keep hard, work hard, and do all the right things, and be proud. You guys will be successful. At math homework, so next time I have my grandson, if I have trouble, I might have to contact one of you guys. Thanks, kids.
Thank you.
2.0 approval of the agenda.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Seconded by Andy. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained?
3.0 minutes of previous meeting.
Do I have a motion? Moved by Michael. Seconded by Amanda. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Obstained? Carry?
4.0 verbal communications. Residents wishing to be heard. Any resident of the Auburn and Lawrence City School District is welcome to address the Board of Education, unless pertaining to the education and/or the operation of the school district. There will be time provided on the agenda at this point. Any resident wishing to address the Board of Education is requested to come forward to the lectern on being recognized, and to give his or her name and address. Questions relating to the employees of the district will not be permitted. Such questions should be referred to the superintendent at another time. Residents have been asked to sign and at the lectern, and limit their presentation to three minutes or less.
Do we have any residents this evening wishing to be heard? Any residents?
Um, I was asked by a resident, who was here earlier, who couldn't stay with us this evening, to announce the Addams Piano Series 13th season, featuring Sean Kate Lee, this Sunday on October 13th, at the Westminster Presbyterian Church. She also shared, her name is Judy Bryant, she also shared that the Addams series is donating 10 tickets to our students for this Sunday's performance. And so, we will work as a team to ensure that our students are given this opportunity, and we thank them for their donation, and alerting us regarding this, this show. I have been to a couple of these concerts already, and they are really something. They are very, very entertaining, very, very high-level pianists coming through our town. And I encourage anyone in the public, and our students, to attend, particularly our students who are interested in music.
5.0 superintendent's reports. 5.1 STAR program presentation. Mr. Jeff Low and Ben Howard, New York State Office of Field Property and Tech Services.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Low, and I work for New York State Department of Taxation and Finance. And the reason I'm here, or what I'm here for, is New York State has taken upon itself to do a STAR re-registration this year, which would basically entail re-registering 2.6 million residents in New York State for the STAR program all over again. And the reason is, why are we doing it? New York State Office of Comptroller recently did an audit of the STAR program, and found approximately 19,000 illegal STAR exemptions handed out. Whether it was on a vacant parcel, a commercial parcel, some parcels actually had the enhanced STAR and the basic STAR, so they were getting maybe 90,000 worth of exemption when it should have been more like 30. So, New York State decided that maybe it was time to, you know, go through a project of re-registering people. And it was a new legislation that required all homeowners to re-register for the STAR, and it applies to about 2.6 million basic STAR recipients. It doesn't include the senior citizens receiving the enhanced STAR. Senior citizens, senior citizens receiving enhanced STAR need to reapply every year. They need to reply annually, because it's an income-based exemption, where their income can fluctuate year to year. And any property owner has questions, they can be directed to our department at the above number. We've been out, I don't know, I'm assuming everybody's heard, we've been out at the state fair, we've been on news probably weekly, you know, we're out at every function. I've been at City Hall, we're at the county legislator meeting. We've been out trying to advertise, and I guess, you know, make as many residents aware as possible, using as many forums as we can. You know, the successful implementation will be that we do re-register all 2-point, or, you know, over 2.6 million applicants, and, you know, it's 2.6 billion annually. It saves approximately 1,000 taxpayers, depending on the school tax rate, going from Long Island, New York City, St. Lawrence County, Erie County. So, the amount of the savings does fluctuate, school district to school district. We're hoping to eliminate all the intentional fraud and unintentional. We're gonna assume that it's unintentional, that people don't realize that their lake house doesn't get the STAR exemption along with their regular residence, or the two-family they own doesn't qualify for the STAR exemption, as well as their primary residence. What we went about, done, or did, was, you know, tax and finance, we collected the 2013 assessment rolls from all the cities and towns, and we assigned a unique STAR code to every basic STAR exemption. And beginning in mid-August, we started mailing out letters with the STAR code and the instructions of how to register for the STAR exemption. Property owners can register through our website, or also call the number they were given on the letter. Online registration, right through our website, there's links, and, you know, it's a pretty easy process. We actually registered a couple people out tonight, out in the lobby. You know, we go through, you go through the homepage, you enter your STAR code, and the website will display the property address for confirmation of where you actually live, or what your primary residence is. You enter your, yours and your spouse's names and social security numbers, for all owners of the property. And you answer the following questions, you know, is it the primary residence? You know, do you own any other property that you're currently living at, that is getting another exemption? I know I get a lot of calls from Florida. They're very aggressive in looking for what they consider tax cheats, if you're getting a STAR exemption in New York, and you're also getting what's called a homestead in Florida. They, they've really taken a proactive approach to make sure that people do not get both exemptions. And if, if yes, you know, they'll ask you to provide addresses for such property, so tax and finance can look into, I guess, if they're getting the homestead exemption, for example, in Florida. We ask that confirm their income is less than 500,000. For the basic STAR, your income cannot exceed 500,000. And then you provide some contact information, and the user gets certified that the information is accurate, and then they receive a confirmation number. At the state fair, registering people, it usually took about four to five minutes online to register. I personally did it by phone. I felt that we should at least know what it's like on phone. It was much more difficult. Took about 12 minutes for me to get it done, and that was at 8 o'clock in the morning, or 8:30 in the morning, when I tried. But online, it is pretty simple. Okay? The schedule, we, so far, provided, we've been sending out the notices and batches. We actually started with the central region, which is 15 counties, you know, in close proximity to Syracuse, or Anadag County. And then we proceeded to mail out accordingly different blocks of counties, the letters. And then, we've kept track, basically, tried to account for who has registered, and it's been about 1.2 million, I believe, is what we're, we're at so far, that have registered out of the 2.6 million we're looking for. And for those that haven't applied by December 1st, there'll be reminder notices sent out, you know, to remind people that, you know, if you want to get your STAR savings or exemption, that it needs to be registered by December 31st. And then, once, once we have everybody, we're gonna send out a final notification to all the assessors of who hasn't applied for the STAR exemption, and their STAR will be removed as of March 1st. And that'll take effect for next year's school tax bill, September 1st of next year. For those property owners that are denied, they'll be able to appeal to tax and finance, and not through the normal channels of their local assessor, the grievance board, and small claims. If they're not satisfied with tax and finance, they can appeal to the State Board of Real Property Tax. And there, again, there is no local appeal to the Board of Assessment Review. Also, on the letter, if you do not have your STAR code, whether you've lost the letter, once on our website, there is a link, or a hot button, where you can look up your STAR code, right on the website, using your address. We've had to do that consistently, I think, out there, because, you know, the people we signed up didn't know their STAR code, we were able to look it up right out, online. It's not too difficult to process. And again, you know, the reason I'm here tonight is we're trying to get out and communicate this to as many people as possible, and we also wanted to make all the school boards aware of what we are doing, because it directly affects the school tax. The City of Auburn, or the mayor of Auburn, Mayor Quill, asked us to come out and actually register people in the City of Auburn. So, I've set it up where I'm gonna be out October 24th at City Hall for about four hours during the day, from 2:00 to 6:00, before their city council meeting. And we're gonna, you know, advertise in the citizen, we're, you know, we're sending it out to city employees, county employees, if they can register at that time. We'll have iPads there, and willing to register anybody we can. So, I don't know if that's something that, maybe I can put in a school newsletter, I'm not sure. I know you get the monthly newsletter, is what I get, but I'm assuming it's a little late for that. Or if there's anything that you'd like for us to send, we can do that, to put out for, I guess, the taxpayers in the school district.
We can put it on our district website.
Right on the district website. Would I just contact Lisa? Green? Okay.
I'll get it in the next newsletter.
Okay. Perfect. All right. And for new STAR applications, that's been a, you know, big question of people who recently purchased a house, how do they, or, you know, how do they qualify for the STAR exemption? Because all the letters have been based on property owners for 2013. What we do is you apply for the regular STAR exemption through the assessor's office, whether it's in the City of Auburn, Town of Senate, Town of Owosco. And next cycle, we'll be sending out a letter to those new basic STAR, I guess, exemption holders, and they'll have to re-register next year. And how we're doing it is, we're basing it off of the STAR code, address, and social security number. Again, it was, I mean, to us, it was kind of shocking, when the audit was done, how the STAR exemption was administered, with it showing up on vacant commercial properties, just that, kinda, well, it was something that we'd never thought actually happened. And again, I'll contact Lisa, or I'll send her an email of basic information that we can put out on your website. And that was it. I'm not sure here, but, I don't know how many have actually done it, but here's our tax website, and the STAR registration program. And it must not be lying.
It was pretty easy. I think it took me less than five minutes to do online. It was quick.
It was definitely easier online. I, actually, when I called in, I had to hold for about seven, eight minutes, and then I actually had a little difficult time understanding the person I was talking to. So, it was definitely easier online, what I was told.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
5.2, we have a project update. John Loro, Camry Teachout, CNS Companies. Ladies and gentlemen, how are you?
Good.
So, I guess we went through a bit of a crazy summer. The good news is, we will not be doing that next summer. The intention is to finish up this, this end of December. I'd like to congratulate Cameron on a job well done this summer. We did have other members on our team that came and left us, as the need arose. Cameron will be leaving us in about two weeks. He's gonna be joining another member of the team. If you recall, Nathan Van Wee, who was here for a while. Nathan is up in Oswego, on their big project at the Oswego Bosse's, and Cameron will be joining him as well. Did you find that presentation interesting on STAR, being a new property owner now? So, pay close attention.
Oh, I did.
So, we'll just go through our regular routine, a couple of photos that we had. We'll save time for some questions afterwards. Some of the improvements up here, if it was still daylight, and you had a chance to wander around, there were a few improvements up here at this building as well.
We started Casey Park. The new seats are in, the wall pads are in. If you get a chance to go over there, it's, it actually came together real nice. We're doing some final cleaning in there right now, just some odds and ends, and I believe Matt, the architect, will be down tomorrow, or Thursday, to punch out the auditorium. But the, in general, the seats, if you look, bottom middle there, that's probably the best shot of one of the refurbished seats. Those are the original seats that were in there, they were sent out, I believe, to Michigan, and completely refurbished. And they, by far, are much better than what you get back nowadays. At the shower room here at the high school, in the previous board meetings, we've shown you progress updates. The upper right hand's kinda what you've seen in the past in the other meetings, and how far it went down. They're completely up and running now. Again, bottom middle, it's hard to see, but you can see what the new shower heads are much, much smaller, kind of like a jet-style shower head. And all the way to the left here, it has the resinous flooring that went over the existing floors. It's a five-step process, but they're, they're almost bulletproof. They're very hard, they're very durable. It's very hard to damage one of them. That flashes all the way down into the drain, and up the wall a little bit as well. Again, at the, at the high school, what you see in some of the previous board meetings is some of the bathrooms in various stages. Now, all bathrooms are up and running. You'll see in the lower left here, the, again, the same resinous flooring that is in the shower rooms, is on the floors here, rolls up the base. All fixtures are in, toilets, all the stalls, all the partitions. I haven't heard any complaints about them, any issues with them yet. Been a, a few minor ones, but so far, everything's been going smooth. Electrical gear. This is by far probably one of the trickiest battles we hit over the summer. Janie Electric really stepped up. They worked from Friday night through Sunday night to replace all the switch gear, so there was no interruption with the school. They worked a lot of long hours, and they just kinda jumped through hoops here to make sure we had as little disruption as possible. We had a few rolling blackouts during the days in the summertime, but overall, very little disruption compared to as bad as it could have been with this amount of switch gear. I gotta kinda hand it off to them. They, they did a great job. Again, here at the high school, you've seen this progress photos in other meetings. This is the back walk. The grass is now taken. We had one or two, we had two sidewalks that did crack prior to the school opening, and those have been replaced. And there's, there's been none since then. I don't know why those two settled, but they're, they're clear, and we've punched that out. Everything's been caulked. There have been no issues back there. Here's one of the roofs off of the gymnasium. We pulled up the, the existing roofs there, all the pavers, is where the pavers were sitting on top. There's now a leak detection system underneath this roof, so if there are leaks down the road, you'll, you're notified a little bit quicker, before actually leaks surround the room below you. This room, or this roof is scheduled to be inspected for warranty on Thursday morning. No issues so far. It's, oh, this is also, sorry, this is a TPO roof. It's white in color, so if it was on your larger sections, it doesn't act like a heat island effect. Even though it is going over pavers, it's a lot tougher than some of the rubber roofs. It's close to anything, should think of solid vinyl. So, it's very heavy-duty, very durable. Over at Owosco, these are the old canopies off of the gym, oh, these are the new canopies off the gym. We replaced them. Over in the lower right, you'll see, we took down the excavation, those are the footers. New canopies, the stucco underneath has been complete, and I actually believe census picture's been taken, they may have completed the roof flashing around the top half. They were heading up there this afternoon. And that should be all tight, that should be all tied in, watertight now. The roof is completed up top. Before the roof was done, they did have some water that came down between the two of them. There was no damage, but it is watertight now, so there's no more issue. Also, unlike the older system, this actually has a gutter gonna be wrapped in the column. If you look, you see the white, the white pipe going up to the roof right now. That's gonna be wrapped in a column wrap, so you won't see it, and that's gonna catch all the water coming down. Here at Herman, some of the casework, it's been replaced. They're ADA cabinets accessible, the countertops cabinets. The only thing that's left in a couple of them are the panels that go in front of the ADA cabinets. They had to custom fit a bunch of them, with the pipes coming down, the drain pipes for the sinks and the water cones in each room. Got in the way of some of the panels that conceal the pipes, so they had to modify them. They've been working on that at night, early mornings. It's just a quick snapshot of where we are. Financials to date, you'll see, we're about 67% build out. You'll see a lot more, a lot of its health for, not contingencies, but, retainedage on the contracts, and some of the items that have yet to be built out from September. Are there any questions?
I'm sorry, stairs on the doors at the high school.
For the control, the security controls?
Doors, I think, on that floor, I believe.
Classroom doors?
Yeah.
They should be coming in shortly, we're told. A while back, we should see them in October. That's, that's the best we've, we've heard so far. Been kinda pulling teeth with Kelly Brothers, a subcontractor. There were some door hardware changes that did change the doors as well, but the latest we've heard is, we're supposed to see them in October.
Where are we on the buzzer? Buzzer's, uh...
Security hardware? There's three, there's three parts to that one. There's the electronic controls, which I believe is all settled. In a couple of schools, the controls are actually in place, as far as the camera, the intercom, and they're, they're making the final connections there. The final piece is the actual contact, or the door latch. There were some hardware changes earlier on that held up some items, so we're waiting on the actual contacts. Again, that's the same subcontractor with the doors, is Kelly Brothers, so we're waiting to hear back. We've heard that some of the items have started trickling into their warehouse. They're sorting them right now. They've gotta identify them for which door, which piece goes to which door.
So, when are you going to be done?
At this rate, I don't, I mean, I, it'll be done in October, but I don't have an actual date for you right now. I'm waiting to hear back from Kelly Brothers on specific dates of when items are gonna come in, or what's in. Some stuff, like I said, some stuff has come in, they're in the process of identifying what is there.
Questions, you want to clarify, others? Thank you.
Thank you.
5.3, school comprehensive education plan. Herman Avenue Elementary School. Mrs. Lattimore.
Mrs. Lattimore's here with us this evening to share the update on the school comprehensive education plan, as you... As you know, all of our schools were deemed focus schools related to our focus district status from last year. So last year, as a reminder to the public, all of the principals came before the Board of Education to present their school comprehensive education plan. And tonight is just a brief update regarding our progress and strategies towards the targets that were set by each individual school team. At this time, I'd like to remind folks of the mission statement of the Auburn in Large City School District as a precursor to Mrs. Lattimore's presentation. The mission of the Auburn in Large City School District is to provide equitable educational opportunities and experiences necessary to develop competent lifelong learners. Through our programs, we will develop critical, creative thinkers and caring, respectful, productive, service-oriented individuals capable of meeting the challenges of the 21st century. So with that, I will turn it over to Mrs. Lattimore. Thank you.
Thank you, Con. And I would like to welcome the Board of Education here today and all the administrators and, of course, our guests. So as Connie had mentioned, I will be sharing our school comprehensive education plan tonight. There have been some major recommendations, and I'll just go through those quickly, and then I will share with you our goals and activities that are, that we have well underway by now. So the first one is to develop and implement consistent Common Core learning standards curriculum in math and ELA to ensure equitable access to the curriculum. We will be generating building-wide and grade-level strategies for increasing critical thinking through higher-level questioning. And the third one is clearly and consistently communicate student learning data with parents so they can engage student learning outside of school. So our goals for the first recommendation would be that the teachers will implement the Common Core learning standards curriculum documents. And basically, our activities that we're going to be doing, and actually, some we've already begun, the teachers will use the Common Core learning standard-aligned resources. And some of those resources are the modules for ELA. And they're being used at this time in grades three, four, and five. I've been fortunate enough to be able to be in the classrooms and see the teachers and students working toward this goal. We're also, we've implemented a new math program, Mind Math, in kindergarten through fifth grade. And that is also aligned with the Common Core learning standards. And then in the sixth grade, we are, they are doing springboard for ELA, and they're using Glencoe Math. So it's well underway. We have also created a building-wide schedule for our inquiry teams to review the ELA modules. And we will be doing core knowledge to facilitate the implementation. And I've met with Jordan Cook, our literacy coach, and again, that schedule has been developed. We are going to meet on Thursday for kindergarten, first, and second grade to begin the process. The teachers will participate in monthly data inquiry team meetings to review the Common Core learning standards, ELA modules, again, core knowledge and assessment data to guide the instruction. So again, as I had just said, we will be having our first meeting on Thursday. Teachers will put structures in place to promote higher-order thinking skills. I am seeing this building-wide. Teachers are doing a wonderful job with this. They're also sharing best practices at staff meetings to promote the implementation of higher-order thinking skills. At our last staff meeting, Sharon Francina and the inclusion teacher, Megan Buckley, they both shared model drawing. And this is something that can be done from kindergarten right through, well, as long as they're in school, definitely through the elementary grades. And basically, there are different ways to problem solve. And this model drawing helps students through a process so they can see a very concrete way to problem solve. So this is just one way that they can get to their answer. Because again, being critical thinkers, we want them to decide what way they want to get to that answer. The next thing is, teachers will consistently use instructional practices that promote high levels of engagement and inquiry for all students. So we are collaborating to identify building-wide strategies that increase critical thinking that all teachers will utilize. So again, based on what I had said, that was one of our steps, is sharing at our staff meetings monthly. All the teachers have signed up for various skills and strategies that they'd like to share. In the classrooms, students are engaging in close reading activities, critical problem-solving, writing for multiple purposes, independent spoken responses, cooperative structures as aligned with the Common Core learning standards. The district is providing training for the teachers to learn all the cooperative strategies if they have not already been exposed to them. Our co-teaching, well, our inclusion classes are learning all of these strategies to be able to piggyback off of each other when they're team teaching, they're parallel teaching. There are so many different ways that they can engage the children, and I think, I feel that it's been very successful. We see a lot of energy among the teachers and the students. The students are very excited to be in one setting and not have to travel back and forth from class to class. So it's working very well here at Herman, and I encourage any of you to come and visit. The teachers will use formative assessments to check for student understanding daily. And as Mr. Andre had noticed yesterday when he was here, they're constantly, the teachers are constantly assessing the students. For instance, they, Mr. Andre had noticed that they were doing partner shares, small group shares, where the teacher can immediately assess the progress. Another quick way is that thumbs up, thumbs sideways, or thumbs down if they understand. If they have full understanding, there would be a thumbs up. If you maybe need more explanation, it might be a sideways. Or if you really are very, it's kind of muddy for you and you really need a lot more instruction or explanation, then maybe a thumbs down. When I was in Mrs. Tibones and Mrs. Bragg's class today, I noticed that she had the children close their eyes and do it, so there was no stigma. They didn't feel like, in case they didn't feel comfortable around their peers, to say that maybe they weren't quite sure. If their eyes were closed, the teachers could assess easily and then give them support that they needed without the children feeling uncomfortable around their peers. But eventually, the teachers do try to build a sense of community so the children all feel free to risk-take without any concern from their peers too. So we're moving toward that. And again, very exciting things going on here at Herman Avenue and also within the district. The school will implement consistent measures of communication that will assist in parental communication of data. We're very excited about some changes that we've implemented already. District-wide, we do host a curriculum night where families will be informed of the data that drives instruction. Our teachers have shared with families how they assess the children, forming their baselines, where to start from with their instruction, and how they progress throughout the year. There are parent-teacher conferences held biannually, which include the data discussions, and that's more of a one-to-one at that time. So curriculum night is more of a mass explanation, presentations. But then again, the parents do get that individual attention at their conferences. Provide an environment that empowers parent and families to ask questions about student learning data. We are, last year, we had a early literacy evening for kindergarten and first grade. This year, we've extended it to second grade, so it'll be kindergarten, first, and second grade. And we have also added a math component to it. So parents can understand how to help their children at home. All parents really want their children to be successful. Sometimes, they're not really sure how to go about it. So this is an evening where everyone can be engaged, parents and children, learning strategies that they can do at home, and also how they can help the children, even through technology, like through RAS Kids, help the parents through the programs, how they can assist their children. So this evening also will include an explanation of how the data is collected and used for a further explanation to the families. A communication page will be added to the monthly newsletter and school webpage that will empower parents to ask clarifying questions related to the data. Answers to parent data-related questions will be included in subsequent newsletters. And we are well underway with that also. I want to back up a little bit and show you the picture of last night's literacy, or last night, excuse me, last year's literacy evening in October of 2012. You can see that we had a lot of participation with parents, students engaged in the process. So it was very successful, and we did a survey, and all the parents were very excited about having this opportunity to learn more about our curriculum and strategies to help the children at home. And this is our newsletter, very excited about that. There is a section where I share a little bit about what's going on every month in the school, what has happened, where we're going forward, the calendar. We do have the calendar for a full year in our handbook, but this, in case there's any updates, we have this for the families also. We, if you'll notice the little Hermans on there, the little rulers, that's our mascot, Herman the Golden Ruler. And that's, our motto is to treat other people the way you want to be treated. And Mrs. Rice, our art teacher, has been very creative, and all the different Hermans are created by the children. So you'll see those here and there in our newsletters, very colorful and, again, creative. We have some new teachers that we've shared information about, so everyone gets to know our new staff. And here is, again, an area where parents can ask questions. Basically, we want parents to understand that we want to help them understand the changes happening in our school and our district. And sometimes, parents might be a little uncomfortable or not know what they want to ask or just feel uncomfortable in a large setting to come forward and ask those questions. So here, they can even be anonymous. So we just put a few topics up here that maybe they have questions about. Inclusion, co-teaching, report cards, your child's test scores, reading scores, the Common Core learning standards, and RTI, response to intervention. We, of course, are very familiar with these terms because we use them every day, but perhaps our parents need more of an explanation, so we want to help them with that. So each month, and it started with our last newsletter, that they can ask any questions they want, and then the next month, we hope to answer those questions. And I would like to, at this time, acknowledge Jana Ottavino. She's our media specialist, and she is very tech-savvy. And we give her certain information, and she creates all of this for us. So thank you to Jana. So what can you, as Board of Education members, do to help us? Well, we would hope that you would help us share our accomplishments with the community. And Mr. Andre was here, and I appreciate that, so he can share firsthand about what we do here at Herman Avenue. Visit the school and our events, and we have many events throughout the year that we hope you can come to. And it is on, much of it is on the district calendar, which is also on the web. And then again, the monthly newsletter. And also, Jana is working to see that this gets up on the district website. And I'm not sure if it's actually live yet there, but hopefully, if it's not, it should be very soon. So we are working on that at this time. Also, support the school's efforts to meet the needs of all students by providing adequate staffing when local funding is an option. And I know that is a challenge, but we hope that you'll continue to think about that. Any questions for me?
The newsletter, do you email that to parents, or do you just go to the district website to pull it up?
Yes, if you go to Herman's page, it should be there. I can't say 100% if it's up yet, but we are in the process of getting it there. Is it?
Do you send it home with the kids too?
Oh, yes, and we do send it home in paper copy, because of course, not all families have access.
But if you don't email?
We do not email it, no.
Because I'd like to get it, but when you say add it to your email list, I'll track it down. So it's at the school site, it's at the Herman site?
Correct.
I can post that in the messages tab on the parent portal too, so anybody that has parent portal can go and take that.
You do.
Any other questions?
Excellent job. Thank you, Mrs. Lattimore.
We appreciate it.
And thank you for hosting us during the month of October.
You're welcome. We'll see you soon for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Five point three, one board link update, Herman Avenue Elementary School. Mr. Andre.
Hello, everyone. I, as Mrs. Lattimore said, I spent two hours yesterday at the, at school. And everybody knows it's not a secret that I haven't been a big fan of this through my many years on the board. But I left here yesterday with a different thought and great appreciation for what I had seen. So I'm not going to try to stay away from what Cindy already, but from my vantage point, this is what I thought was really good. We, we did, first Cindy and I met for about 15, 20 minutes going over the plan, which was, I had some questions for her, especially about inclusion. And she made me feel better about it, and then I saw it in practice when we toured the classrooms. And the first thing that Cindy already went through that I thought was outstanding, and I don't know if our other four elementary schools do, but the newsletter, do all of our elementary schools do a newsletter? I thought, the part of the newsletter I thought was outstanding was the part where the parent was able to ask questions and they would be answered the next month. I think that's outstanding, because there are a lot of parents that don't, that might feel intimidated if they have to ask, call the school or come to the school to ask that, so I thought that was excellent. The calendar, that's out every month, that was so complete. I mean, there wasn't anything missed on that calendar that parents would know about. Obviously, the more parents know about, the better. One of the examples was the physical education curriculum night, which is coming up on 10/16. Literacy and math night, K through 12, which is on 10/24. And I got to say, when I went through the building yesterday, I left here just really, really pleased at what I'd seen. The rooms, the inclusion classrooms, I could not tell the children that were, you know, and include, I, you just couldn't. They worked so well together in the small groups, the way Cindy described it. It was outstanding to see it. You know, I can only, when we had the presentation from the couple from SU, what was?
Julie Costin and George Theo Harris.
That's what took me at the time of that presentation, was to try to put yourself in the place of young children that are pulled out of classroom and the feeling that it must give them. And I just think it's wonderful, the inclusion is where we should have been for quite some time, and I'm very proud that we're there now, especially after seeing it. Something else, when I remember music classes, of course, I was in elementary school in the 60s and early 70s. Music classroom was music classroom. Went there and sang songs and, you know, and learned music. I was really taken back by the music teacher. One, his enthusiasm was just over the top, it was fantastic. And they were talking about songs from World War II. They were talking about the Marine Corps hymn. And so he was incorporating social studies, history, in with music. And I thought, wow, that's wonderful. It was just great to put those two things together. And every room I stopped in, I was just amazed with the level of engagement that the students had with the teachers and the aides. It was, I just, I'd never seen anything like it. And I went, you know, I had four kids that went through elementary school, and I was very, very active. Things have changed. And my youngest is only 22, so things have really changed. It was high level, I did not go in, we went in a lot of classrooms, and they didn't know we were coming. They didn't, you know, we just, we stopped in. You know, the other amazing thing is when kids that age, especially the younger kids, usually when someone comes in a room, they take their attention off the teacher, and they didn't do that. It was like we weren't even there. They were so intent on what they were learning, all levels. I mean, it was phenomenal. It was just so exciting, the things I witnessed. It was just so exciting, the things I witnessed. I felt very, I was very pleased that the level was just sky high. I was, I was pleased with everything, so I had to leave here with a new thought of, I will be back. I, I'd love to sit, and I'll call Mrs. Lattimore, I'd love to sit in one of those elementary classes, don't have any, please, no math, second or third graders, but I'd love to sit in an elementary class and read a book. It was, it was really good. I was very, very pleased and I want to, I want to thank Mrs. Lattimore and all the teachers that took time to talk to me and tell me what they were doing because it was very helpful. Anytime you need a reality check of why we do what we do and why I've been doing it from '99, why I serve on two school boards, go to an elementary building, see those smiling faces and know that you're working your harvest to do the very best for those smiling faces. And I tell you, I, I have not stopped talking about it, Mrs. Lattimore, I have not stopped talking about it, as you can see right now. It was, it was very good, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Andre. Five point four summary data APPR, Tiffany Moon.
Yeah. This past year, I don't know how many people are familiar or folks at home are familiar, New York State regulations changed relative to the way that we have to evaluate our teachers and our head principals. And this annual performance, professional performance review is substantially different than it has been in the past. Years ago, our teachers would have simply been observed by a principal or director and gotten an annual evaluation, maybe with some recommendations on it. But now we've gone to sort of multiple measures of teacher effectiveness and they include a classroom observation component, state growth scores that are dependent on how well our students are doing on state exams, a local portion which this last year was made up of regents exam proficiency in fourth and eighth grade science exams. And for those teachers that don't teach a course that ends in a state assessment, they set what's known as an SLO or a student learning objective and did a pre-test, set a target for those students to meet and then tested them at the end of the year to make sure they met that target. And then they're awarded X number of points depending on the percentage of those kids that pass. All of this sort of culminates in what's known as a Heidi scale. And that's highly effective, effective, developing, or an ineffective rating for every teacher. And we've just compiled all of our data from last year and submitted that to New York State. Ninety-eight percent of our teachers scored effective or highly effective, which is truly outstanding. We have just a handful of teachers that scored in the developing range, they'll be working with Jeff's office and developing a teacher improvement plan, will be targeted on those areas that for which they were identified as needing some improvement. So I just wanted to give you that update that was relatively recently, that I've sent those scores off to New York State. I'd like to commend Leela and the administrative team, this was not an easy implementation. Rules were perpetually changing from State Ed, utilizing new software and new process, a new evaluation rubric. SLOs were brand new, guidance coming out mid-year. This was a lot to navigate for folks. All in all, this was very clean for me to go in, be able to get that data, verify it, get it sent off to State Ed. So it was nicely done by our teachers, well supported by the administration, so I feel like we have a good basis for moving forward.
Also, a little packet that you had, that everyone received there, that was information that came from the workshop that Michael and I attended last week. There was just most, I mean, all of it pretty much you've seen before, but again, it was just summarized in a different way. So we just asked Leela to Xerox it and hand it out to everybody. There was a piece on there on APPR just to remind you of what the 60%, 20%, 20% were. And then there was a couple summary sheets on Common Core. So when you get a chance, just kind of read through that again, just to refresh your memory.
Thank you. And before we go to committee reports, we are going to move to a five point five, which we forgot to add on, but of course we want our report from our students, from Elena and Jordan, so we're going to turn it over to you.
I'm just going to talk about senior year. It's been a great start to our senior year and college is coming before we know it. And in English classes, the past month and a half, we've been writing our college essays. And it's really, it's a lot of stress on us kids being able to do it in the classroom and having our teachers be there every day and help us kind of decide which way to go with it and able, able for us to have them edit it and tell us if it's what they're looking for or not. We also are busy taking our SATs again, trying to do as best as we can because those are one of the things that colleges are looking at. And then another thing that we've been doing is during study halls, the guidance counselors have been taking us to computer labs if we want to, to work on our Naviance, which is where we go to send in our college essays and teacher recommendations. So it's been busy past month and a half.
When are your deadlines coming up for applications?
I'll use me as an example, I want to go to nursing school, so my deadline is January 15th that I have to apply for nursing school, so. Yeah, they're coming up quick.
And college nights coming up soon too, isn't that?
Yeah, it's, when, I want to, yeah, I'm not 100% sure when that is.
I think it's maybe the 24th, it's a Thursday evening.
I was gonna say, is it November before we have the day off? So, yeah, the 24th.
For me, I can't say I've been as busy as the seniors. Being a junior, I've been overtaken by homecoming week that just passed. The dance, the football game, the pep rally was a lot of fun, especially for me, the pep rally was fun. I was nominated by some of my nice classmates to participate in the pie eating contest. I didn't really know about it and I had quite a long run after school, which didn't end well, but. That was, that was a lot of fun for me, watching my junior class beat the seniors in the tug war was also a lot of fun. There weren't really any problems with homecoming weekend, which just made it even more enjoyable that you just got to come together as a school and have no conflict or anything. The football game, it was a lot of fun and as well as the dance, it was, it was a great weekend.
And your team has a trip coming up, don't they, cross country, where are they headed?
We are headed to the Bronx to compete in the Manhattan College Invitational. We leave Friday morning and we race Saturday afternoon. We're competing in the biggest race and the biggest cross country invitational in the country.
Amazing, and the whole team is going?
No, only the top seven are going.
Okay.
It should be a lot of fun.
And how much longer do we have for fall sports? The season's wrapping up pretty soon for fall sports, or another week or two before sectionals start or?
For me, I know my sectionals are November 2nd. And then for anyone that qualifies for states, it is, I want to say, a week after that. So I know I have like another month to go.
Yeah, I saw that senior nights are coming up, you know, within the next two weeks, most of the senior nights for soccer, field hockey, were all coming up.
Home tomorrow night, Everest, right?
Yep, tomorrow night's my cross country team senior night at Everest, we're facing Orkren, so it should be a nice event for our seniors.
Thank you very much.
Six point zero committee reports, board shacks meetings. Six point one update on curriculum and instruction committee meeting held on August 19th, 2013. Ms. Carvajal, Mrs. Rhodes, and Mrs. Salt.
We actually have two meetings, so we can kind of just come behind them if you'd like to. August, the August 19th meeting, we had a lot of updates at that meeting. The minutes we did send out, a lot of it was just on what had been happening over the summer, the professional development over the summer, what was set in place to start the school year off in September. We went through MyMath, we went through, you know, all the co-teaching. The day after our meeting, there was the two-day co-teaching workshop, which was out at BOSI's, which Kathy and I were both able to go out and visit for a while so we could see what was happening there. All the, there was 80-some teachers, teacher aides that were all involved for those two days, so it was great to see that. So that, that meeting itself was pretty much just an update on, you know, what was happening and what was about to begin in September. Kathy, anything else to add for that one? Yeah. And then we'll just, we'll come back to six point 111, we'll just go to the next meeting, which we just had. Dea, do you want to talk about that meeting?
I'm not prepared to. If you want to, please feel free.
We just had another meeting on September 30th. Again, some more updates, Mr. Tim Moon came in and updated us on the APPR that he just talked about here with us tonight, gave us some of those statistics. MyMath, we got an update on how MyMath was being implemented, that was going well. Inclusion, again, we talked about the inclusion classrooms, you know, what was happening with that. Again, everything seemed to be going very smoothly, school year was off to a good start. Teachers were going to be able to meet, you know, at least once a month and then report back their findings to Leela and Stacy Cummings so that they could get feedback. Any, you know, questions or problems that they had, they could report back to Leela.
We discussed School Tool.
School Tool?
Tim gave a little review of that, you know, the implementation and talking about the parent portal being, getting up and starting to be ready, it's, it's on.
It's on.
So that's moving along.
And how's our, are parents logging in to parent portal?
Parents are logging in, getting, you know, calls and other emails trickling in. Parents are tied to each of their children so that when they log in, they can see any one of their children in the district. On occasion, they'll see one of their kids but not the other, and so we're doing some of that cleanup as we're going through. Some updated emails and stuff like that, but you know, as I'm monitoring our usage, it's slowly climbing, so we're, it's getting out. So folks have, can always contact the school for whatever reason they didn't receive. We, we did do a bulk email on September 30th, so that anybody that was queued up in the system should have gotten an email from School Tool Admin. Sometimes those kind of bulk emails do get directed to the junk mail or to a spam folder depending on what sort of system you have. So if you didn't receive it and you thought you should have, check your spam or, or, you know, filter your junk mail. If you don't see it in there, please contact your school, make sure that they have your correct email and they'll get in touch with me to re-spin your account if we have to.
Leela, anything to add that we missed? Thank you. We'll go back to six point 11, sorry to get out of order.
Six point one point one, minutes of curriculum and instruction committee meeting.
Do I have a motion? Vote by Michael.
Second.
Second in by Kathy, discussion, how in favor?
I am.
Opposed, staying carried.
Six point three, discuss board workshop held on September 25th, 2013.
We held a board workshop on September 25th, a long-range planning committee put together the agenda for that evening. The main topic that evening was setting board goals, which we did a very good job, but we can all pat ourselves on the back for that because we did a good job, there was participation by everyone. We came up with our goals, there was five goals that the board has come up with. With the help of Tim and Connie, we were able to put them together. Connie did send out in the Friday update, two Fridays ago, she did make a couple changes to the goal for high expectations for all learner, all learners, she did add a couple words to there. She added the words "and educators" and also for teaching and learning. Did not receive any response back from any board members, so we assumed everyone was in agreement with those changes to that goal. Is everyone in agreement with that? Okay. It was, I thought it was a successful evening, we accomplished what we had set out to accomplish, you know, to set these goals. I think they're good, strong goals that we can move forward with year after year and, you know, do a little tweaking here and there. The next step that we have to do with them now is for our own benefit, is we need to learn how to assess these goals for ourselves so we can do our own evaluation, we can do a board evaluation and evaluate ourselves every year that we are meeting these goals. So we did get started on that and then ran out of time, so that is something that we need to work on. Other board members, want to chime in for that evening?
I felt it was very beneficial. I think that we have, we had a lot of discussion and I think everybody, you know, did voice their opinion, but we all came to consensus, I think, that we, you know, consensus on the goals and where we want to be and I think we worked together very well as a team, so I was very pleased.
The goals will be posted on the website, so public can see the goals as well, you can read the goals. Any board members like to add for that evening?
I just, just to write on what Kathleen said, it was, it was a very constructive meeting and it was a pleasure to see everybody working together and discussing things and, you know, just kind of coming to a consensus was a really beautiful thing, I think. And we kind of done it without Tim and Connie there, who kind of did the homework that made it being ready for us when we walked in the door. But it was very, very satisfying.
Dates to remember?
Just one more date, October 22nd at 6:30, we have a policy committee meeting. If there is executive session, it will be moved from 6:30 to 6:00 PM.
Also, you'll see, the convention is coming up, the NISBA convention is coming up. You should have gotten, everybody, your resolution packet here. Okay, these are due back at the next meeting, October 22nd. Bill has had much experience with this over the years, so as you read through it, any questions, you can always direct them to Bill, I'm sure he'd be more than happy to respond to anyone with questions. So, you know, please take the time to look through it, vote on them, and bring this back on the 22nd. Also, if you plan on attending, you need to let the district office know, either Karen or Leela, sorry, Loretta know, you can let Leela know too. I'll just say it's for our listed jobs. Either let Karen or Loretta know so they can get you signed up to go. Or other board members, let everybody else know that you intend to go as well so that you can maybe do some carpooling, you know, as well on those days. I think Friday is probably the big day that most people will go if they go.
Just a word, Carol, last year I attended again in Sodi Pill and it was an easy convention to attend because we were the topic of conversation, Auburn School District, because of our efforts in Albany and the budget process and all that that took place. And it was easy for me to sit in the back of the room and listen to all the kudos we were getting. So I think it's important for us to have a showing there, I intend on going and, you know, anybody else that you can't make it three days, I know Kathy came in last year, at least come to a portion of it. It's good to represent our district because people from all over the state are there and like I said, last year Auburn was the focal point in many of the seminars that I went to. And I, you know, we found it very easy to sit back in the back of the room and hear Auburn all the time. So, and I want to continue that and make our district proud. So it's, you know, if anybody's got the time or the interest, there's a lot of good topics on the agenda and different meetings that are going to be held and a whole gamut of issues, especially this year with a lot of the teacher changes and things like that. It'd be good to get some people in there and listen.
Thank you.
Just mention, Friday, October 25th is staff development day, I want to just extend an invitation to any board member who would like to visit with us on that day. Leela has been working on partnership with the Teachers Association, a schedule for that day. I have often said publicly and I just want to reiterate that this is the most difficult the work has been in public education, at least in my time, in the 22 years that I've been working in this field. And our teachers have really embraced the challenges and And our teachers have really embraced the challenges and opportunities that we find within this reform agenda, including the implementation of the Common Core learning standards. Most recently, superintendents have heard the New York State Commissioner talking about the implementation of the Common Core and really sort of backing off a little bit in terms of the implementation and acknowledging that there are some gaps that really need to be met in terms of, that require teacher skill. So I just want to just invite you again to this day because our teachers are working diligently to close those gaps, understand the Common Core, including the modules, and implement them in the classroom in a way that is meaningful and developmentally appropriate for our children. So again, I would invite you to that day to see them hard at work because this is extremely difficult, an extremely difficult time in public education.
Was there, also, just last Friday was the event. Connie and I both attended, several of our teachers and our counselors attended, and that was the event at Welch Allen. It was a great event. Connie was able to go in with the commissioner. Was there anything else that you learned when you were in there with him, or was that what he was talking about?
Well, that was some of it. The meeting with the commissioner was a private meeting that many, many were allowed to attend, and most of the people in the room were superintendents and some board members, past and present, and members from the business community. Really talking about, the focus of that meeting was really a focus on how can businesses, particularly in the region, and we were at an advanced manufacturing business, come together to ensure that our children understand what careers are available for them, again, regionally and nationally. And how will we hold one another mutually accountable for ensuring that not just students but that our educators as well recognize how to ensure that children in our districts are accessing that information. And so I came back, I was really very excited, and I began to talk to Leila about March 21st, our staff development day, because really, it's just important, I think, for educators to see it. And so I think that day will be different than any day that we've seen in Auburn for staff development. I think we'll, many of us will be on a field trip.
I thought that day was interesting. They started out with three local manufacturers, when I say local, I say Syracuse area, that talked and gave presentations. And one of them said something that I think resonated with a lot of people, and that was, we need to talk to kids more about what career they want to pursue and not just what college they want to attend. And they really kind of emphasized that, starting at the junior high level, to start looking more at a career path instead of just the college path or the workforce path or the military path. I thought that was a statement that kind of resonated, you know, with people when he said that. But it was a very interesting event. There was, I don't know, maybe 300 students that were there that got to tour Welch Allen. I went, I followed some of our Auburn students around to what they got to see. It was, it was a great event. I was happy that I went to it. They had a very good turnout for it. And it was interesting that the commissioner was there as well, so. Sorry we can move forward, sorry to get off track again.
I have a question. What time are we going to meet on Tuesday for long-range planning? There is not a time.
How about 6:00?
That's fine by me. That's fine by me. Kathy?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. All right.
Walks your way.
Any other questions?
I'm curious, is State Ed trying to do a better job? It says here, you know, you said that they're recognizing that there are gaps in helping our teachers with the skill to meet those gaps. Are they doing a better job at rolling out the curriculum itself, the modules? I mean, it's hard to address some of these issues when, when many of these things are hot off the press from State Ed. Just simply getting the curriculum in a timely fashion rather than getting it at the last minute. There are, there are many things that we're holding our educators accountable for, our schools accountable for, our children accountable for, when some of the basics aren't being provided for them, and that, that concerns me greatly. This, this last-minute modules rolling off, not having the materials to teach our students, and then being held accountable in the moment seems to me to be unreasonable. And I just, I'm wondering what the state is doing to, to address those issues at this point in time. Are they doing anything to address it?
I'm wondering too, Dea, to be honest with you, but I don't mean to be flip in terms of private response.
No, I don't take it that way.
But I think that where we've seen the most delay is in secondary math. And so if you, to say that they're doing a better job, I think they're doing as best as they can. Some of the modules were released in a more timely fashion, but the secondary math pieces has been somewhat piecemeal. And teachers really have been left, the part where I think that the state really can do a better job, even though there's much information on their website, Engage New York, it is a very difficult website to manage and to navigate to find the information, so that's one thing. I think they could probably improve that in a way that makes navigating the website to find the information you're looking for as an educator easier. The other thing is that even though there's a lot of information on the website, again, taking it from the module into the classroom and the implementation of it, I think, is where the gap is. And so for us at the local level, we have tried to provide time and space for teachers to review the modules, to study them, to work together in teams, to collaborate, communicate with one another, and share ideas in terms of what's working well, what's essential learning in terms of the Common Core and the modules, and what, what is, I don't want to say unnecessary, but what should be deprioritized within those modules and the Common Core.
I don't get the sense that State Ed really is feeling the stress that they're putting our educators under, our communities under, and our children under, and I'm extraordinarily frustrated by it. If I were to put State Ed on a Heidi scale, I wonder where they would fall. And, and then we would have a baseline for, for doing this. I think they're putting extreme pressure on all of our educators. I just want to go on record as, as saying that. I don't, I don't find that it's, that it's all hunky-dory. I don't. I mean, I'm, I'm worried about our students, I'm worried about our educating communities, our education communities, and I'm worried about our teachers and the morale of, of our educators right now. So rather than belabor the point, I'll just leave it there.
Thank you.
7.0, old business. 7.1, amend board policy number 7131, ten minutes serious. This is the second meeting.
Do you have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Bill.
Second.
Seconded by Amanda. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying carried.
7.2, amend board policy number 1340, principals of school board members. This is the second meeting.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Sam.
Second.
Seconded by Kathy. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying carried.
8.0, financial matters. 8.1, donation.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Sam.
Second.
Seconded by Andy. Discussion. We do have a copy of the book here. Thank you to Mrs. Wavy for the copies of these books. It's called The Delighted Ducks of Hoops Park. She donated one to each of our elementary buildings. If you'd like to see it, we can pass it around if you haven't seen it yet. So thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying carried.
8.2, memorandum of agreement, CLOCA.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Bill.
Second.
Seconded by Andy. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying carried.
8.3, contract, Anadaga Corp. in Madison Bosse's.
Do you have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Seconded by Dea. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying carried.
8.4, agreement, Cuba, Anadaga Bosse's rooms.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Sam.
Second.
Seconded by Eli. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying carried.
8.5, declaration of surplus property.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dea.
Second.
Seconded by Kathy. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying carried.
8.6, agreement, school resource officers.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Sam.
Second.
Seconded by Michael. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying carried.
8.7, change in assessment of school taxes, corrected 2013-14 tax bill.
Do you have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Amanda. Seconded by Dea. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying carried.
8.8, tuition rate for Cuba centers.
Move.
Moved by Bill.
Second.
Seconded by Kathy. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying carried.
At this point, the board will consider whether to proceed with consent agenda for items 9.0 through 11.1.
So moved. Moved by Dea.
Second.
Seconded by Andy. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying carried. We are adjourned. Again, thank you very much to Herman Ave for hosting us this evening. We will be back at Herman Ave again on October 22nd. Thank you.